Yeah. Everyone, please rise and the pleasure to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon?
Here.
Glenn Conklin?
Present.
Scott Dyke?
Here.
Jennifer Methan?
Here.
Darrell Jefferson?
Here.
Claudia Gazal?
Here.
Tina Oberlin?
Present.
Marc Zepidi?
Here.
Nate Albert?
Here.
Joe Kubal?
Here.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the work session from the meeting held on September ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
Some of.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on September ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methan?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marc Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Abstain.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, you also have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
Some move. Some move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on September sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Jennifer Methan?
Abstain.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marc Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You have before the approval for the minutes of the work session held on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
Okay, so move.
Are these ones all the changes before, Chris?
Yes.
So I'll second it with the changes.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman person Oberlin with the changes to the minutes that were today. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marc Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Abstain.
Joe Kubal?
Abstain.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methan?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, you have before you the minutes of a special work session that was held on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the minutes of the special work session held on September thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marc Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Abstain.
Joe Kubal?
Abstain.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methan?
Abstain.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There is one item that I have on the agenda for tonight. I believe this was discussed several work sessions ago. This was a request by the owner of nineteen sixteen Cora to waive the tap-on fee. During that work session, the consensus of the council was to waive that rather than do a formal written resolution and spend the time and effort on that. I just recommended that it be on the agenda as a motion. So absent any other questions, a motion would be in order to waive the water tap-on fee for nineteen sixteen Cora. So moved, just presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the motion to waive the water tap-on fee for nineteen sixteen Cora Street. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have one, Mayor. I believe back years ago, there's time when we redid the streets, and when we were redoing the streets, the mayor made a recommendation that we put in at empty lots, put in a water box, you know, the buffalo box there, so that in the future, we don't have to dig up the street in order to put that water buffalo box if someone decides to develop or tap onto it. It's already there. Because we questioned the same thing, my wife and I, because my wife's aunt's property over on Wilcox on the empty lot has a water buffalo box in the middle of the lot, and it was never tapped on. There was never a fee paid. That was done when the road was done. So that's why I'm just bringing this to everyone's attention, that a lot of this was done to save the city money and time from tearing up a street. So it's up to everybody what they want to do, but I just want to bring that information to yous because I wasn't here at that work session.
Okay, anybody else? Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
Marc Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
No.
Jennifer Methan?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I do not have any other agenda items, but I will be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions of city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Tony Graff. Good evening, Tony.
Yes, I got the administrator's report. As far as this facility goes, we're still on schedule. Fire marshal and with our elevator contractor, they're going to come out and do the final inspections, which will be October fourteenth. We're also getting our vendors updated proposals for the crack in the glass, the blue glass, over by the clerk's office, and also where the park district is. Hopefully, we'll have some updated proposals. We'll be able to bring to the work session next Monday to get those repaired, fixed, or replaced, depending on their recommendation. The Grand Prairie Commission, they're going to start working on the draft budget. They're on a calendar year budget cycle, so we should have a draft budget for the commission to review either latter part of November, but definitely in December, we need to have a public hearing. As at this point, we're still on budget. There has been a few unique situations coming up with some of the soils, but nothing that has taken us out of our budget estimates at this point. Stateville, they're all the prisoners, the maximum security incarceration people are all moved out to other locations or still on site at the other center. We have nothing new to report from the engineers or from the corrections department. We're anticipating to see some type of, at least, utility and infrastructure design, design work in the next couple of weeks, what we were told. We'll see what happens in regards to that. Working with your city attorney, we're preparing a court of claims letter per the council work session meeting to where we're going to file for a claim for the eight hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, sixty-two cents, and then the other, the additional one hundred and nine thousand, we'll have in the letter that we're not dismissing that money, that money with prejudice is the legal term. So we'll get that letter prepared and get that sent out, work with the treasurer too for his signature, and hopefully have that sent out in the next few days. Fire District, they're still moving forward. If you go on their Facebook, they have now put the PowerPoint for the public to see the design and the operations around the fire, the fire district's training facility. So as soon as we get the traffic study, which is going to delay this just a little bit, the said traffic study is probably going to take four to six weeks. They've been working on it, so hopefully by maybe Thanksgiving time, we'll have the traffic study, and then we'll be able to start working on the entrance design, determine on the impact of the traffic study that they're going to present to us. So they were hoping to look, look at doing something maybe in, in November, December for the planning commission for the public hearing, but I think it's more realistic that it's probably going to be in January, we have the public hearing get scheduled for their facility. Route sixty-six, we're going to be bringing your presentation reference to the memorial park, and the design theme that we're looking at is to, with the grant, is to have the Route sixty-six theme behind it. Well, we got different suggestions and designs that Ron Weedeman's good to, he's preparing a nice presentation, and we should be able to present that to the council either at next week's work session or the following one. Job announcements, public works director, we did interview two. We got one more to interview this week. Community development director, we're still accepting resumes and applications. Finance director recruitment, we have set up two interviews for Wednesday with the Dave Strahl, myself, and Erica, and we've been in tune with treasurer Glenn in regards to that, so hopefully we might have a candidate that we could at least provide the resumes to you at the end of the week, and then we could schedule some interviews. Building inspector announcement went out. We did find another job site to send it to. I think we had one or two inquiries, but no other applications. I did get an announcement from the mosquito company this morning. They're going to spray next Thursday, this Thursday, due to the fact we have not hit that thirty-five degree at night. They believe it's still worthwhile to do another spray. They're doing it in the other communities that are nearby too. Very unusual weather. But we're still capturing West Nile viruses from some of the mosquitoes from the traps, so it's very, I think, appropriate to keep this going due to the warm weather we had. Water replacements, we're still working with property owners with the times. We're gaining ground a little bit. Places for eating tax, we sent out five violations of delinquent payments on their monthly tax with five different restaurants in our community. There is one correction. Due to the timing of sending out the notices per, in the mail and dropping them off, we're probably going to be in a November hearing date instead of the October hearing date, but I'll give you an update as soon as I have that confirmed. West sanitary treatment, we're, again, we're still about fifty, fifty-five percent completed, still on schedule for twenty twenty-six. The immunity code program for the planning commission, we do have the three proposals. The clerk and I will be going over those, and we'll give you an update at the work session. The crime lab, we did get an update regards to the crime lab. At this point, they're looking to come in and do a presentation at next Monday's work session, so we should be able to see what the final design is for the crime lab, the L.A. State Crime Lab over by District Five. Any other questions?
I was in the office this week, and I looked at that crack on that window, and it's, it's quite a nasty crack.
Yes.
And I'm alarmed because I would hate for that to fall out, shatter, or cut anybody, so it's really quite a large crack, and I would not want anybody in that office to get hurt by that.
I, I agree.
Because it's right by the doors, and the wind comes in, and if it's, you don't know what's going to happen. So, and at the point we're at now, I have absolutely no faith that it would withstand wind, so we really need to get that addressed. And my second question is, when you said we would file the court of claims, what was the phrase you used? With prejudice?
With prejudice.
I thought it was without. Isn't it without prejudice, so you're still open to refile? What I want is something from the court of claims acknowledging, not something that we're saying. I want something that is either signed by the administrative law judge or whoever the, the judge is in the court of claims, and then executed by the Department of Corrections that says that this acceptance and the dismissal of the remaining sum is without prejudice to refiling. That's what I meant. There, there are two separate terms, and without is the one that opens the door for further filing. With is different. Right. So I just want to make sure that we're doing this properly because, once again, I'm not going to ask the question after it's done. I was always under the assumption that legal term for what we're looking at is without prejudice. That's correct. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Go ahead. I just wanted to make sure that next Monday's work session, we're going to have the two explorers on?
Yes, we have the inventory for surplus properties will be on.
All right, and also, what's going on with the weeds on Oakland Avenue? They haven't been cut yet.
I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask them. You talked about the ones over by the ComEd?
Right, and that railroad yard there.
We sent them letters.
Right, I know letters were sent, and the ComEd said they were going to send someone out to cut it, and
Still isn't.
it hasn't still been cut, so I just want to make sure that there's a follow-up on that.
I will check on it for you.
All right, thank you.
Tony, when you mentioned about the interviews taking place, you said yourself and Dave Strahl and, I think, Rob Minsker, I was, my question was, isn't Alderman Gazal on that as well?
No, these are the, these are the, we call the pre-screening interviews. It's by phone to go over their resume and their applications, and then we identify which would be the best candidates to bring forward to, to you guys. But now the Alderman Gazal, she was, she definitely helped us with the last community development. When we got down to the last candidates, she was involved with that, but not with these, unless that's something you guys want to talk about, you know, in the work session.
Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question. Tony, can you please make sure that next agenda will have the change in forms of government referendum? I talked to the attorney, and it's something that needs to go on the agenda before December, in case we need to put it under referendum, and we can't waste any more time. Do you agree, Mr. Steph?
Yeah, we were waiting on, I had assigned the research on whether you could just change by, change, rather than change the entire form of government, whether you could just change the, basically opt out of certain appointment powers of, that are under the administrative or the municipal code. That research, I don't know, has been totally completed yet, but I will have an answer to that question, so we can have a discussion next Monday. So work session topic would be fine for next Monday. I just don't know the answer yet.
I understand, but you will have it by next Monday?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Moving on, Public Works Department. Today was the first day back for Mike. There, he does not have any agenda items, so we'll move on to our city engineer, Ron Weedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening. I also do not, do not have anything on the agenda, but if anybody has any questions or comments?
Questions of city engineer?
Yeah, is everything proceeding on schedule with Wilcox?
Yes.
Because I haven't seen them there in a few days, so.
New storm sewer is in place. The old sewer has been filled as of last Thursday. They're supposed to come in early this week, clean up, and start concrete work to finish the restoration.
All right, because I haven't seen them there for a few days. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, they, they're rescheduling their next crews.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question, Ron. We all received a letter on September twenty-fifth from the Richland School Board Superintendent regarding the, the crosswalk project that the city had proposed or initiated and approached the school, and their, their letter to us was voicing concerns both for safety and funding for transportation. Since the, since we've received this email, has there been any other discussions or movement on this in any way?
No, we did submit for the application for the funding, and we'll, we'll have to follow up with that. Right now, that's, we did submit the application for funding. What I would like to state here is just because the school district is saying, no, we need to seriously think about a crossing at this location, because even though when school's not in, kids are crossing all the time there to go to the park on the other side, and it is a safety concern. You know, the idea, we'd like to try to come to some consensus with the school, and that's what we're going to do and work with them, but we, I think it's worth at least doing, you know, applying for the funding, at least get some funding in place, so at least then we can then talk about some options with the school district. They had some concerns. We can address some of those concerns engineering-wise. The only, the only issue that we can't really address is the transportation funding side of it, and that'll have to come to council for a decision of what they want to do at that time. But, so at this point, we just submitted an application. We're supposed to meet back with them sometime in November. They were supposed to get some answers for us on a few things, and then see if we can try to come to some type of an agreement. And again, if we get awarded the funding and we can't come to agreement, we just don't accept the funding, so, but that, we just, that was a short window, at least to try to apply.
So are you saying you're going against the school?
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that just, my statement to council is, you know, the school, in their emails, or, or, I'm sorry, in their letter that Mark had referenced, was they had two concerns. One was funding, and one was safety. If we can address the safety part of it, just be aware that, you know, there are kids crossing that street, you know, at that location, even when school's not in, in the summertime. So there's a park on the other side of the road. So there, there is a, there is a safety concern. How we address it is the question, you know? Can we come to some consensus that satisfies everyone? But on the engineering side, I can't satisfy the question of funding for transportation. That would have to be something that council, the school district would come to an agreement with, but at this point, we're not even talking about that right now, so, but I hope to have that conversation with them.
How would the city have any part of the discussion regarding their transportation funding? That's between the school and the state.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, is that we, we really don't have any to say the loss of the transportation funding, but I guess, from my perspective, I think we need to get a handle on what is that loss? You know, what are we, what are we talking? You know, so at least we all are aware of what the funding is that they're losing. Is it ten thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars? You know, I mean, what, what, what is the loss of funding? And does that loss of funding outweigh the safety of having a crossing there? And that's, and that's what we all just need to look at. I, I don't know the answer, Mark. I'm not saying we are going to do one there, but I mean, I think if we can come to something that maybe the school can satisfy some of their safety questions, maybe the funding then discussion might go away, or maybe it's still there, and then that's still part of the whole equation. I, I don't know that yet. But like I said, all we did was submit for an application, just to see if we can get the money, and then if that's, that's the case, we do get it, then we can have some more and further conversations. Again, this is not something that's going to happen like in the next two or three months. Probably the earliest thing with this, it wouldn't even be constructed if we came to an agreement until the beginning of next school year, so we have a lot of time to talk.
The further discussions happen, then it includes the entire council, not
Correct.
just one member or two. It should be the entire council. It's a council decision, not just.
Understand, but we do got to, we, I need to come with you with something, so I got to do a little bit of research on our side, just so we can have a conversation.
Well, the other thing is, I hope next time you put something like that will be on the work session, not just in the city council where we don't have enough information or ask the questions.
Well, yeah, and I will do that. I said, my, I apologize, it was just that we, it was the timing, you know? I mean, sometimes we don't get a lot of timing on things, so.
Great, thanks, Ron. What do you mean by timing?
I found out, I found out two weeks before we got it on the council meeting.
Are you talking regarding the, the grant application process?
Yes. Yeah, that, that the grant was, that the grant was available and due.
I, I think, I don't want to speak for you, but I think Alderman Gazal was referring to the entire process should have been brought to council for discussion, or possibly at a work session to get full discussion on, on the project as a whole, from its inception.
Okay, I'm not sure. We had enough information to bring to council for a conversation. That's what we were trying to gather as the information in order to bring to council to have a, they have a discussion. So I, I agree that at one point, we needed to bring it to council to have a conversation. We just weren't at a point to bring that at any time yet.
I have a few comments on this, Mayor. Nobody can seem to answer my question, but there was a
Nobody can seem to answer my question, but there was a crosswalk there 12, 15 years ago. And nobody can answer the question on why it went away. So if somebody can answer that question, I'd greatly appreciate it. I know that there were some city council members that are sitting here now, where there was a crosswalk there. So.
And I was sitting here, and I don't, I don't recollect whatever happened to that.
For some people to jeopardize the safety of kids because they get 100% funding because of hazardous roadways is very negligent on the school board when they know that children are walking across that busy street. So, what Mr. Wedeman has done is applied for a grant, that we all wanna have grants here at the city council level. There's been no funds that have been spent, just research, a grant application. This isn't just for the kids. This is for the residents that had a crosswalk to the park across the street for years, and it disappeared. If somebody can answer that question, I'd appreciate it.
Was there a crosswalk on the Richland side of that street?
There was a crosswalk in the middle of Caton Farm Road.
Right at? From, from the north to cross to the school?
Yes.
My question is, on the receiving end of that crosswalk, was there a crosswalk on the south side, on the side, on the school side of the street?
It went all the way across Caton Farm Road. I mean, it just went across Caton Farm Road.
Once you got to the grass on the Richland side.
It just went to the grass.
I know in my neighborhood where there were crosswalks on one side of the street, but on the other side, it didn't meet up with another crosswalk. And so there's concern about having a crosswalk, and you get to the other side of the street, and there's no, no crosswalk, no cement crosswalk. So they removed them, and it just went to grass.
Who removed them?
The city.
The city did?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering if that was also the case here? And we don't know, how, how many years has it been? Since it was removed? How far back does the?
I don't know, Mark.
I think I saw, I think I saw 2010 was the last GIS.
So it's 2010 that we haven't been hearing of how unsafe this situation is. It's just until recently, and you're ready for this?
You're absolutely right, Mark, so you know what? Tomorrow morning, why don't you join me? Why don't you join me tomorrow morning, when I'm rock walking across that street? I've had residents reach out to me, come join me.
Okay, Nate?
So I'll see you in the morning?
I don't deny that, people cross the street. I'm just questioning that all of a sudden, it's a, it's a, it's a priority that we do it.
Who said anything about a priority? It's discussion.
You moved to that street.
It's a discussion, is it not, Mark?
You moved to that street.
Is it a discussion?
You moved to that street, right?
You're absolutely right.
Does that have something to do with it, Nate?
And you know what, I grew up there, Mark, and there was a crosswalk there. I grew up three doors down, and there was a crosswalk, so I can go to the park with my friends.
Okay.
So I'll tell you what, when people are flying down Caton Farm Road, and the school justify, they know that, that people are going over speed, which is again, an issue with police, but they also know that kids are walking across that street, and that's okay?
And for the last 10 years, have you been fighting for that crosswalk? Since you've been an alderman in that ward?
Had one other family with younger kids move into the last four years? If you let me answer the question, see, that's the thing, you don't let anybody finish.
Yes or no question?
Yes. So in the last four years, a younger students moved into that, and yes, the discussions have come up. I mean, everybody wants to think that there's conflict, there's conflict of interest. It also seems to be a conflict, conflict of interest that, that, you know, somebody else's name is on this, that happens to be your spouse.
It's the optics of this, Nate.
The optics that I brought up the question of why?
To pay your money to serve your family, and I'm not saying it's only your family.
Are you joining me tomorrow morning?
I think I've said enough on this.
Yeah, you certainly have.
I'm not sure, we're, we're asking questions here, nobody said, we're not gonna do it, nobody said, we're against this. I'm not sure why you're getting so aggravated, Nate, people have the right to ask questions.
And I have the right to respond.
I understand, but was that question to you, he was still talking to, to Ron, I mean, I don't know why you're upset. I've been fighting for my guilty for years, we all want, you know, safety, so I'm not saying that's not true, but there's no reason to disrespect each other like that. If somebody has a question, they can ask it, what we're saying is, we need more information.
You're absolutely right. The mayor asked if there was any more comments, that's when I started talking, I don't think Mark was talking to the engineer. Okay?
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Ron. Alright, moving on to Community and Economic Development Director, Ron Messner. He had a scheduled day off today, so he is not here this evening. We have two agenda items under him, so I will try to take the lead on these. The first one is Agenda Item Number Six, Approval of an Ordinance Approving a Front Yard Setback Variation from 30 Feet to 15 Feet With Respect to the Real Property Located at the Northeast Corner of Cheney-Monge School Property Located at 400 LC Avenue in the City of Crest Hill. So this is for a reduction of a setback from 30 feet to 15 feet at that corner of Center Street and LC Avenue. This was passed through the Plan Commission, so now it comes before the City of Council for approval. Are you by chance here with?
I'm Chuck Newman, the architect.
That's what I thought, Chuck, if you'd like anything to add to this conversation, please come to the podium, just state your name for the record, and anything you'd like to add in regards to this request?
I'm Chuck Newman, Charles Newman, the architect for the school district. I really don't have anything to add. Basically, this is related to the fact that the school district actually owned the property to the center of the street. Okay, and so part of this, this is, is actually transferring some of that property that, that's, that's the street property back to the city. So the Board of Education has agreed to do that. But in the process of doing that, we had planned the building addition based on the 30-foot setback. Because we're moving the property line closer to the school, we need to reduce that setback to 15 feet. And there's, there's, in my opinion, it's a little bit of an unusual situation where the front yard setback is actually by, by standard planning commission guidelines is always the shortest property line. And that happens to be that east property line, where really the front of the building is towards the south, right? Where the main entrance is. So, and the side yard setback would be typically, I think, 15 feet. So it's not inconsistent with other setbacks in, it's a family zoning. So I think that it's consistent with what has been happening in the past.
Right, and your comments about the center of the street is actually the next, the next resolution that we have to deal with. This one is strictly for the setback from 30 to 15 feet.
Yes.
And, and the only reason, the only reason this is necessary is because they're dedicating
Right.
the property back to the city, which makes their property line now closer to the building. So number six and number seven go hand in hand. Number six, which is the ordinance granting the setback, is also conditioned upon the execution of the dedication of the plat, which is the attachment to both documents. So they are part and parcel of the same deal.
And both of the, both of these agenda items were discussed at the September 23rd work session here with the city council. Ron, is there anything you'd like to add in Ron's absence?
No, I mean, Mike, Mike nailed it, basically, yeah, these things go hand in hand. So with our request, in order to clear, to vacate the roadway right away, it, it causes a violation for the setback. So in order to, to get the dedication, we also need the variance for the setback.
Right. Any questions from city council? Okay, thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Alright, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak for or against the request of Cheney-Monge School, 400 LC Avenue, for a setback from 30 feet to 15 feet on the southeast corner of their property for the addition of a new building? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Second request, anybody would like to speak for or against the request of Cheney-Monge School, 400 LC Avenue, for a variation in setback from 30 feet to 15 feet at the corner of Center and LC Avenue for the addition of a new building? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. And the third request, anybody would like to speak for or against? Let the record show that no one has approached the podium to the city council. The Plan Commission did unanimously approve the request. Therefore, I would be asking for a motion for an ordinance approving a front, front yard setback variation from 30 feet to 15 feet with respect to the real property located at the northeast corner of the Cheney-Monge School Property Located at 400 LC Avenue in the City of Crest Hill, the application of Cheney-Monge School District 88.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alder Person Overland. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methen?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2000.
Wow, good number. Alright, we're halfway home. Alright, the next one, Agenda Item Number Seven is Approval of Resolution to Accept Plat of Dedication for Public Purposes, A Portion of North Center Street at the Northeast Corner of Cheney-Monge School Property Located at 400 LC Avenue in the City of Crest Hill. And again, this was discussed last, September 23rd at the work session. So the Plan Commission did approve this one also, so I would ask, Chuck, you already made your comments in regards to this one, is there anybody from city council that has any questions for Chuck or for Ron?
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. This is my alma mater, and I think this is all for the good, and it's only right. You're gonna give us the land, we're gonna give it back to you what you deserve, so I appreciate your work, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, if anyone from the audience would like to speak for or against the request of Cheney-Monge School, 400 LC Avenue for the building addition and the plat of dedication, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Second request, anyone like to speak for or against the request, the, the request of Cheney-Monge School, 400 LC Avenue, for the plat of dedication to the City of Crest Hill? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. And third time, anyone likes to speak for or against the request of Cheney-Monge grades, or Cheney, Cheney-Monge School District 88? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To the city council, this was approved by the Plan Commission also. I would be asking for a motion for a resolution to accept the plat of dedication for public purposes, a portion of the North Center Street at the Northeast Corner of the Cheney-Monge School Property Located at 400 LC Avenue in the City of Crest Hill.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alder Person Overland. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methen?
Epstein.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1260.
Okay, you're all set, thanks, Chuck, have a good night.
Thank you all very much.
Alright. Next on the agenda, our Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark, good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council, I don't have any agenda items this evening. The only thing I'd like to say is that I'd like to congratulate the Crest Hill Police Association's golf outing. They were able to raise $15,000 from their golf outing, and they are going to donate to three charities. One is the Will County Child Advocacy Center, one is Little Friends, and then there's another charity for retired canines to provide medical assistance for them. So those are three charities, and they raised $15,000. Little Friends.
And then what was the third one?
Medical Assistance to Retired Canines, it's a, a charity for that.
Good job.
So they did, they did a fantastic job, it was very, very nicely done. But I will entertain any questions.
Questions of Police Chief?
You got easy tonight.
Yeah.
Ed, that was a wonderful event, and that was a very hard course, but I still can't believe that you hit the tee that far for beat the chief, so.
I have one golf club, and I use it every year.
It wasn't straight, it wasn't straight, though, it wasn't really out of farewell, was it?
I won't, I won't claim that, no.
I don't think so. Yeah, you were a little left on the farewell side. Alright, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Alright, Mayor's Report, we have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week for October 6th through October 12th, 2024. We will begin the reading of the proclamation by Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation proclaiming October 6th to the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Crest Hill. Whereas the City of Crest Hill is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire and?
Whereas home fires kill more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. Roughly three out of five fire deaths happen at home with either no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms, and?
Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires almost in half. Smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger and the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and?
Whereas Crest Hill residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level at home. Crest Hill residents will make sure their smoke alarms meet their needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physically, physical disability, and?
Whereas Crest Hill residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and?
Whereas Crest Hill's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Crest Hill residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and?
Whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week themed Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Therefore, that the Crest Hill Mayor and City Council do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024 as Fire Prevention Week.
Be it further proclaimed that the Crest Hill Mayor and City Council urge all the residents of Crest Hill to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Crest Hill Fire and Emergency Services. Given under my hand the corporate seal, the City of Crest Hill, on this seventh day of October 2024, Raymond Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alder Woman Methen, with approval of proclamation proclaiming October 6th through the 12th, 2024 as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Crest Hill. Questions or comments?
I do have some comments, because I found some very enlightening things out about these. I had hardware, I have hardwired smoke detectors in my home, and they had been in there since I moved in. And a fireman was visiting my home several years ago, and he asked me, how old are these? I said, I don't know, I've been in the house, you know, 20 some years, they've been here. I did not know that even though they're hardwired, they do not last forever, and you need to replace them. So he had me immediately replaced all my smoke alarms in my home, but I, I just think it's something that people might not be aware of, cause I wasn't. I thought because they're hardwired, they just last forever, but they do not. I think it's 10 years, yeah. So that's something to keep in mind if you have the hardwired detectors. And when I was at the municipal league convention, I spoke with the firemen at great length about one of the latest things that are on the market, which is natural gas detectors, which you should also consider having in your home, and they need to be mounted high and not low. And I found out this from my own experience, because my neighbor came to my house to help me hang a cabinet, and he said, don't you smell that gas in your house? And I'm like, no. And I called Nykorn, they came out, and I had not one, but two gas leaks, which could've blown up my entire home and all my cabinets. So those are a great thing to also invest in going hand in hand with fire safety is, if you have natural gas appliances in your home, get natural gas detectors as well, because he told me that because the leaks probably started out small, I just got used to the smell. And when somebody came to my house that wasn't, they noticed it. So word to the wise, experience.
Well stated. Well stated. I actually had a similar experience at my home this last year. So that being stated, infrastructure in these homes is getting older. We need to be aware that these are risks. They're easily fixable risks, but we need to be aware that this is possibility, especially in our neighborhoods.
Anybody else? Roll call, Police Chris.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I understand that the Lockport Township Fire Protection District had their open house yesterday. I heard it was a very successful event. Unfortunately, I could not make it yesterday due to another family commitment, but they said it was one of the largest crowds that they had in the last several years. So kudos to them and to all the ladies and gentlemen of the Fire Department for the services that they provide to the city of Crest Hill, Lockport, and Romeoville also. That's it for the mayor. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
I don't know if this goes under you, Mayor, but as you know, the TV CBS contact many of us, but specifically me, they call me twice. And the first time I said I don't have any information, and I just gave them a very brief of what we were told because I don't want to hide anything, but also I don't want to say stuff that's going to engage the city in the wrong way. The question that I have here is, I understand we're in the process of bringing Michigan water, but that's going to take several years. What is the city is going to do? I understand that we are responsible for the buffalo box, but what about the old iron lead pipes in the old section? Even though we bring Lake Michigan water, they're still going to have those issues because they have old pipes. And I understand they're responsible for that part. We're not. But as a city, is there any way, I'm going to go by grants again, that we can start, bring our heads together, and let's make this a goal to help the residents of Crest Hill? And how we can get funded to help? If lead is illegal, if it's not healthy, there's going to be a way that we can help the residents with that.
And we are currently testing for that now.
Correct.
We are working with several of the homeowners. I do not believe that there are many homes that have lead or solder in their systems, but that is one of the requirements that we have from the city of Chicago for the Lake Michigan allocation that we have, is to try to find those and to remediate them. And I will turn it over to Ron if you can add anything to those comments.
That is correct, Mayor. We are now, we have hired a company that's out of Georgia. Right now, Public Works is harvesting pipes in those areas, as you mentioned, in the older sections. They're looking for lead soders, lead solder has not been, or lead pipes that we don't have, and had any. The pipes that will be cut, they go down, they get tested. They get tested by running our water through it for long periods of time, and then once they reach a certain level, and I'm not an expert on this testing, but my understanding is then they run the Chicago water through it, or Lake Michigan water through it, and make sure that there's no reaction with the water going through like that happened in Flint. So that's being done as we speak. It has to be done before we can even move over to City Chicago Water. We are replacing water mains in areas that we know we have a lot of breaks and, you know, trying to fix those. But, you know, I think what you're asking is really the ones that aren't having problems with, you know, eventually like to get those replaced. But that's what the testing here is doing, is letting us know if we have any issues like they did in Flint. Flint didn't do any of this testing that we're now doing and being obligated to do by the I E P A.
Well, how come we haven't, like, notified the resident? This is something instead of them going on TV and contacting social media and contacting the media? And, you know, communication is everything because we see it every day on Facebook or every other day that people have orange water, you know?
The testing has been discussed here several times.
But not with the residents?
It is on the Grand Prairie Water site about the testing. So there is information out there, some of the information I handed out at some of the summer things that we had, had information on there.
Those particular homes, they need information. We need either knock on their doors or give them information and say, this is what we're working on. And that answer could answer to the media because they made us look like we're not doing anything.
We have sent.
If we informed ourselves, we could give the media the correct information, and we won't be on national TV.
We have sent letters to, I think we're over at least two hundred homes, asking if they want free testing. We offer that up.
And no charge to the homeowner.
No charge to the resident. And if there is, if we do find that there's possibly some copper, I mean, some lead around the solder, then, you know, we will come in and, you know, we'll fix that for free of charge.
But that's something different because I worked with Public Works. I gave them fifty-seven addresses. I understand that. But most of the addresses I gave them is from my area. So I'm talking about the old section.
Yeah, they sent out more letters from, there was other councilmen gave addresses too, to Mike. But we sent out additional letters because we're still, we're still short. We'd like to, we'd like to get more pipes tested, more homes tested. So if anybody has any type of discoloration in their water, contact us. We did send somebody to the home for the lady that talked on TV, and we're trying to offer up any services we can in regards to her house. So it's nice to have it on social media, but call us. We could be, we'll come out to anybody's home, and we'll test the water, and we'll look at the pipes, too.
As someone who lives in one of those older areas, we have a whole home purifier or something of that sort, but when my husband removes that filter every three months, it is the color of blood. It is bright red. And, I mean, we have great quality water because of what we have, but if we didn't, it would probably not be very drinkable.
We probably need to come to your house.
I'd be happy for you to test my water.
We need your permission.
Okay.
Give a call to Public Works or I'll send an email.
Thank you.
And Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Strand has worked with the city. When you have identified pipes that need replacement, there are grants that can be obtained to help. And I think Strand, I know with Rockdale, they've got a lead line replacement program. Now, it's not that many, but because Rockdale scored well with the state, they're getting either principal forgiveness, complete principal forgiveness, or a really, really low interest loan to do that. And I think that.
And actually, that'll be discussed the next Monday's workshop, and that we did get an I E P A grant. I will elaborate more on that next week for some water main lining that we're doing to do exactly what you're asking to do in some of our main transmission lines. So that will be discussed next week workshop.
About six months ago, we did get, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Congresswoman Underwood from the federal side for corrosion control within the city of Crest Hill.
Right.
That's the study that's being done in Virginia.
Yeah, it was, and it's company in Georgia. I just.
Okay. Moving on to our city clerk's report, our clerk Christine Verche-Haw. Chris?
Good evening. The only thing I have to report is the city of Crest Hill and Lockport Township Government will be holding a free community shred event on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from nine AM till noon. We ask that you limit the boxes to four of them, and this will be held in the parking lot here at City Hall. And that's all I have to report. If any other council members would like to volunteer that day, I do have Alder Person, Tina Oberlin, and Alder Person, Scott Dyke. But if anybody else, please.
I have said that I was going to.
Pardon?
I have said that I was.
Okay. Anybody else, then, just drop me an email.
Two of us.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our city treasurer's report, our treasurer Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item I have is I seek your approval on a list of bills issued through October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of four million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion would be in order.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methen.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, he's reporting regular and overtime payroll from September ninth, two thousand twenty-four through September twenty-second, twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. That's all I have for this evening unless anyone has any questions.
Questions of city treasurer. All right, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business, anybody?
I'd like to speak in new business as the mayor. I mean, to say, first of all, it pains me to have to bring this up under these circumstances. However, it's not gaining any attention to become an agenda item, so I have to bring it forth, which I think is a good government practice to install for the city. I've been asking about a hiring committee. The objective is to interview prospective candidates for leadership positions within the city of Crest Hill Municipal Government. The committee shall consist of the Human Resources Director and an elected official from each ward to interview candidates for vacancies within the city for positions of city administrator, public works director, economic development, community development director, financial director, and police chief if vacant. Their duty is to select the best candidates to bring forth to the council for final interviews and recommendations to be hired into the vacant position. The committee for fulfilling the human resource director position shall consist of the city administrator and an elected official from each ward to interview candidates for the position of human resource director. Their duty is to select the best candidate to bring forth to the council for final interviews and recommendations to be hired into the vacant position. This hiring format will supersede any current hiring guidelines, if any, that are in place. The reason for bringing forth this change is the city of Crest Hill currently has four vacancies in key leadership positions and have not been able to hire anyone to fill the vacancies. This change is a change for good government practice and policies replacing old archaic practices that lead to corruption and mismanagement. This format could also replace other committees currently using the archaic practice that is currently in use. All elected officials working on these committees shall receive compensation at the council meeting rate of pay only for meetings that are held and attendance at the scheduled meeting. If for any reason a special meeting is called, then the compensation shall be at the council meeting rate plus half of the council meeting rate. All guidelines for every committee shall be in writing and stored in a safe confidential location within the city clerk's office. Any changes or amendments to the document must be written and attached to this document by the date of change and section to be changed. Any provisions of other committees being replaced by this format shall be written and attached by date of change and section to be changed. I have been asking for this because throughout this state and throughout the United States, people are developing committees to do their hiring. And me personally, I think that it's unethical to have a person interviewing a prospective replacement. I just have never seen that process work out well. And I bring forth this to the council because we are in a position of embarrassment throughout our peer municipalities because we cannot seem to get a person to want to work here. And I don't know if it's the process we take or the questions we ask, but every position should have a job description. And that job description should be followed, should be in the hand of everyone that's on the committee, and the guidelines followed for hiring should be made up by the Human Resource Department to attract candidates, to make Crest Hill an attractive location to land people. I'm not disparaging anyone because I know we have sensitive feelings here. This is not an arrow pointed at anyone, accusing anyone. This is just an attempt to bring a solid government practice to the city of Crest Hill that seems to be successful everywhere. I'm asking for concurrence of the council to place this on the agenda at the next work session for further discussion. And that will give our attorney the time to look up things and see what's amenable and what's not. But it's only an attempt to bring some solid government to the city of Crest Hill and moving forward. Thank you.
Are we going to put this on the agenda? Because I know for a fact he's been asking about it for a few months now.
We can't take any action tonight, can we, Mike?
No. But my only thought is that if it's going to be on a work session agenda, you may want John Kelly here, since I don't like to step on the labor attorney's toes. I mean, I'm certainly willing to engage in the discussion if that's what you want, but that's technically John Kelly's role, and I wouldn't want John to be offended that I have usurped his role. So that would be my only question is if you want it on a work session for discussion and you want John here, I don't know that you want to set it for a day that he can't be here.
Is there a union position on that list of?
I don't believe so.
These are all exempt positions.
What's that?
These are all exempt positions that I named.
So we would need John Kelly, then, would we?
Not necessarily. I just don't want, I mean, I would want to make sure that John didn't want to be here to weigh in before we set it. And I can call him tomorrow and ask him. I mean, as long as he says, you know, run with it, or if he wants to be here, I'm happy to bow to or defer to him.
If you would check his availability for the fourteenth through the twenty-eighth?
Sure can. Do that tomorrow morning.
Does anybody have an objection?
No.
Tony?
Yes, you do have Skiditch engaged already for internal controls. Been talking to Mary O'Connor, her associate. She is focusing on the employee manual. She's focusing on the organizational chart, everything that she talked about with the council. Probably about three weeks away to where they would have probably some draft and some more questions for, to present to the council and make sure they're going in the right direction with their report. So I would, if you want, I could forward this to her and the associate that's working on the internal control assessment. So it could be, maybe putting the cart in front of the horse just a little bit because you hired a professional to come in to talk about how to reorganize, you know, your hiring practices and accountability and transparency, diversity. All that information is being reviewed. So maybe forward this to them, so at least they have, they'd like to know about, you know, what's going on in the council. So I could do that if you want. I don't want to forward without asking you, so.
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Tony, if you're gonna do that, then I would try to find out from them a timetable because I don't want this just going into the ether. And, I mean, I'd like to at least put a little pressure on them to move this forward and at least tell them when, tell us when they expect to be able to come back to the council because I just don't want it to be hanging out there forever or until they get around to it.
I'll send an email after I contact them tomorrow, see if I get them knocked down on a timetable, it's two or three weeks from now.
Sure.
Make sure that's solid.
Okay, thank you. All right, committee liaison reports, anybody? City Council comments, positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Begin with Alder McCubal tonight.
Nothing to add at this time Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Yeah Mayor, I know that the Crest Hill Lions Club will be out on the street corner this weekend, Friday and Saturday. I believe they're starting around 8:00 AM and going until their legs fall off, but they'll be at the corner of Larkin and Plainfield Road collecting for the annual Candy Day Drive.
Alderman Sapidi?
Nothing at this time.
Alder Person Overland?
Nothing at this time.
Alder Woman Gazzal?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alder Woman Methvin?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Dyke?
Nothing to add to anybody else's comments.
Okay, public comment. Anyone like to address City Council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our City Attorney Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
There is a executive session for litigation listed, but I met with Tony, Don Seaman, Chief Clark, Zoe Gates, Dave Strahl. Did I say that? This afternoon to discuss this item and it's not yet ripe to, it's a potential litigation. It's not yet ripe. We sent out a letter today giving the property owner until mid-next week to allow our people in to inspect the property. If we don't have a response by next week, we will have it on the agenda for the next meeting, two weeks from now, for your discussion and executive session. So there's no need for an executive session tonight.
Motion to adjourn Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Albert. Questions or comments? Roll call Police Chris.
Jennifer Methen?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, meeting is adjourned at 8:08 PM. Thank you and good evening.